Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:05. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming, especially all the people that are here for our showcase, so thank you very, very much for coming. And we did not have an executive session tonight, so there's no votes to report on, which means we can go right to our showcase. So I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Cummings.
Why, thank you. So, welcome, everyone. So, tonight, we have the pleasure of honoring some of our winter athletes and their multiple successes across several sports. So, you know, we are fortunate to have our girls' basketball team here with their coaches, and they were able to make it. Unfortunately, our girls' swimming and wrestling, and our wrestling teams who we were also intending to honor this evening, both had state banquets tonight, so they were not able to make it. But we are fortunate in that our girls' basketball team was able to make it. So I'd like to bring up to the podium our two coaches, Catherine Mahoney and Abby Hummel, and if they could come up and just say a little bit about their season and introduce our wonderful players here, that would be really terrific.
Hello, um, Catherine is going to... I don't know if your microphone's on, because we have a lot of people that watch from home.
How about this?
Yes, perfect.
I'm tech now. My name is Abby Hummel. I'm here to represent the athletic department for the high school. Matt Marr, your athletic director, is actually at the girls' lacrosse game at home right now, who is actually being highlighted on the NFHS website tonight. Yep, a highlighted game, so check it out. Unfortunately, yes, swim and wrestling are both at their respective banquets tonight, but we did have a busy winter to fill you in on our winter sports. Boys' and girls' basketball, as always, we had boys' and girls' indoor track that produced an All-State Athlete. We had both of our boys' and girls' ice hockey team in the Frozen Four this year. And we had boys' and girls' swimming and wrestling as well. When we're talking about girls' swimming, I don't know if you guys have been following them, but they are a little powerhouse out of Narragansett. They started in D4 two years ago, undefeated state championship. Last year, they moved up to three, undefeated state championship. This year, they moved up to two, undefeated regular season, state runner-up for Division Two, and fourth overall in the entire state in the Swim Championship meet. So, that's pretty impressive. That team, tonight, is being awarded with six All-State medals, as well as 18 All-Division awards. So that's where they are tonight, if you're wondering why that, what they're doing. When we switch over to wrestling, our wrestling team, thanks to our dedicated student athletes with that team, as well as the coaches, just five years ago, only had two athletes on that entire team. This year, however, total turnaround, 22 athletes, will have 19 returning next year, and they are your D3 champions, undefeated, 11-0 as well. Something special that the wrestling team and the coaches really wanted me to point out this year for them was that they held a try-meet this year at the school, which consisted of alumni from the past 45 years of Narragansett wrestling. Every coach that we've had was there, our coaches, the referee was a Narragansett alumni, as well as the opposing coach for Central High School is a Narragansett alumni. So, they're really building something big over there. And tonight, the wrestling team is being awarded with three All-State medals, four academic All-State medals, eight All-League wrestlers, and the head coach, Mike Gallagher, is one of three coaches up for Coach of the Year in the state of Rhode Island as well. Finally, I feel as though you've now heard enough directly from me, so I've talked to our seniors from our basketball team, although I coach and Catherine coaches, head coach Catherine Mahoney is going to come on up. We talked to our seniors, and they would love to be the ones to share about their season with you. So let me introduce our tiny team of 11 that did really big things this year. Let's start with our senior captains, Bridgette Blessing and Anna Hart. They're going to be the ones speaking on behalf of the team. And then let me introduce the rest of the team that was present tonight, Dharma Parks, Grace Blessing, Brooke Cafrey, Grace Leonard, Sam Cronin, and Grace Cronin.
And Abby, can you kind of get the gang in a little semicircle? Lauren can probably help you where you should go, because we want, you know, people are watching at home, too, so Lauren can line them up where is a good place to stand while the two are speaking. Thanks, Lauren. And we'll do pictures, we'll do, like, besides Lauren, we'll do family pictures after, too.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Blessing.
And I'm Anna Hart.
And we were the senior captains of this year's Narragansett High School girls' basketball team.
We're both three-sport athletes and have completed on numerous teams throughout our years at NHS. This basketball season was our 11th season as Narragansett Mariners.
Going into the season, we knew it would be a team heavy with underclassmen, as we were the only seniors along with just two juniors. We weren't sure what to expect as far as team camaraderie. What we didn't know is we were about to make 10 new best friends.
Not only did our accomplishments go to show the incredible season of basketball we had as division champions, state championship runner-ups, and making it to the state open tournament, this season, our team has become a family.
From our pasta parties, pre-game bus rides and dances in the locker room, or laughing until we couldn't breathe at practice, this team has grown closer than ever imaginable. We can both agree that this team is the most tight-knit group we've ever been on.
So, me personally, I tore my ACL at the beginning of this season, and although I was hurt for the whole season, this team has always made me feel so included and has made me feel like I was still a part of the team. And the amount of support they gave me during my recovery has been so amazing.
We are incredibly proud of all this team has accomplished, both on and off the court this season, and will cherish the time we spent with them forever. As three-sport athletes, we are incredibly thankful for the opportunities the Narragansett school system and Mariner Athletics has provided us with.
We couldn't have asked for anyone else to end our basketball careers with, and can't wait to see what everyone has to accomplish in the future.
Thank you.
I just had a couple quick questions for the seniors. Have you decided what you're going to do next year?
I'm going to Clemson University.
I'm going to Simmons University, and I'll be playing soccer there as well.
All right, congratulations to the seniors. Coach Mahoney, did you want to add anything else, or just anything else that you want to add?
It's technical, I could grasp the girls', but I think they gathered it perfectly. You know, it's not just, I think, success on the court, but your closeness and my experience that all the court was good, so you're a pleasure, Coach. I just wanted to make that one clear, but congratulations, thanks for all the help. I appreciate it.
We appreciate you all coming, and so we're going to do another big round of applause, and then if you guys can stay there in case any family members want to come up and take a nice picture. So, let me just see if the school committee has anything else they want to say, and then we will, like, pause, let you guys do pictures, but I want to do a sincere congratulations to the seniors that spoke, you did a great job. I really like how the coach really wants the focus to be on the captains and the kids, I love that. Congratulations, and we're really glad that you came tonight. We love to see you and your families. This is a big deal, and we're really glad that you're here. Any other school committee members want to add anything?
I'll just add that, you know, congratulations to the team on their incredible accomplishments, to the two seniors heading to Clemson and Simmons, and three sport athletes, that's no small accomplishment, so, you know, figuratively, take off your hat to you, and a really impressive job, and I wish you the best of luck on your future careers.
You know, Tammy, I will just add one thing. If you think about our seniors, you know, they missed their, especially our three-sport athletes, they missed their spring season as freshmen, and then they went on and played basketball in Mass for two years at least, right? And really endured. And so, you know, you're looking at a level of commitment from them that is truly admirable, and they did just such a wonderful, successful job. And you have not seen their secret talents of being able to sing on Instagram, which they are, you know, very, very well-known throughout Rhode Island for their pre-game singing abilities. And so we're really proud of everything that this group has done and what they represent about all our students.
One more round of applause, and then family members, if you want to come up, we're going to take a brief recess. All right, well, we are back on track. So at this time, it is now time for open forum. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak? All right, so hearing none, we're going to move on to oral reports.
Tammy, that was the one thing that I had brought up, I didn't know if that was going to be allowed from that parent. I didn't know what the, if that was going to be allowed from that parent.
Sure, so we had a question. A parent had reached out and wanted to send an email statement to be read at open forum. And so currently, when I look at our current bylaws, it doesn't give that exception. So my recommendation is that we check with our attorney. For next month, we'll have that answer. And then we need to get guidance whether it, if it's not in our current bylaws, is that something that we need to adjust our bylaws? Do we need to do a policy change? Then we can kind of take it from there. But that's my recommendation because it's not, it's very explicitly stated what we have, but there isn't a clause that says that we accept written statements as well. So we are in the middle of open forum still. Is there anyone who just walked in that wants to speak?
Yes.
Okay, it is open forum. You can catch your breath and come to the microphone, introduce yourself. You made it, so.
There we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening.
Yep, no problem.
I have a statement to read from somebody who could not make it.
Sure, and you can introduce yourself.
And I will, yeah, I'll do that too.
All right.
So my name is Richard Armstrong, and tonight I am going to read a statement from Tara Seager on 189 Sunny Brook Farm Road. Good evening. I'm here tonight to respectfully offer feedback about the district transportation to both the school committee and the school department. Fortunately, my two children are actively involved in a variety of before and after-school programs every day of the week offered at the peer school. I sincerely appreciate how much my children enjoy their participation in activities such as band, chorus, chess club, robotics, and student council, to highlight a few. I am especially grateful for the volunteers who have stepped up to run these wonderful programs. As many may know, the district does not currently offer transportation for before and after-school programs at the peer school. As a result, providing our own transportation has posed a challenge with respect to accessing these programs consistently. This year in particular, it has been difficult for my family and a number of other parents to coordinate rides and car pools for our children. While in many instances, we have relied on the support of one another, it has created a strain on my family and other families, inad hoc speaking, to fill the transportation void. This has resulted in a number of missed opportunities and ultimately limited access to programs due to being late or not being able to attend at all. My concern is that in lack of busing is creating a situation of inequitable access for my and possibly other peer school families. I do wonder the extent to which there are other peer school students who similarly cannot attend reliably or cannot access outside-school-hour programs whatsoever because of the lack of reliable transportation. I wonder if a brief family survey would assist the school department in gathering data to assess the extent of the issue. It has been brought to my attention that the district has made a number of good-faith attempts to address late bus transportation via advertising for a driver. However, it is my understanding that these efforts have been unsuccessful to date. While I am grateful for and encourage the continuation of such efforts, with all due respect, I am curious whether the school department can do anything differently or in addition to address this matter. Thank you in advance for your thoughtful consideration of my feedback and request, and I appreciate your time. That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so we are going on to oral reports, starting with the school committee. Do any school committee members have any reports to give?
Just an announcement that on April 29th, Saturday, April 29th, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, it will be hosting their annual meeting at the Crown Plaza Hotel, and all school committee members are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a report to give? Diane?
It's not something that I've done, but it's something that I'm very much looking forward to doing tomorrow morning, and that is being part of the interview team for our first-ever high school representative to the school committee. And we've had nine applicants, and we'll be interviewing them tomorrow, and I'm very much looking forward to talking with them and learning more about them.
Diane, anyone else have a report to give? Okay, then we are moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Great, thank you, Tammy. So just a couple of highlights. So right now, you know, certainly we're in full swing, you know, through the, through our spring activities, and you heard a little bit about sports tonight. Right now, we are doing our RICAS testing as well as the SAT was this week, and so a lot going on in the schools with assessments right now. We are busy hiring staff for the, for next year, so we've had some great success. I'm really encouraged by the number of applicants and the quality of the applicants. So we're really excited about that. We've had a number of really great hires already, a couple of math teachers, social studies. So that is really boding well for us, and people are really interested in coming to here. The process that we use is that we, you know, certainly advertise and gather applications, then we form a committee at each school that typically consists of teachers, administration, students, often a parent, and they go through and they do screening interviews, then they take the two or three finalists and have them teach a model lesson, and then they kind of evaluate them based on that model lesson. So they come in and teach to a class, one of our, a class of our students. They then take those finalists and they send one or two finalists to me. I do a final interview with them, and then we select them. So it's a pretty rigorous process, and, you know, we've really gotten some great candidates out of that, so we're happy with that. As you heard tonight, it's an exciting time for our seniors, so they're getting their college acceptances, so that's really terrific. You know, so far, we've, and we'll provide a full list to you, but some of the highlights, you know, we've have kids going to local, you know, terrific schools, URI, Providence, Bryant, Rick, Salva. So we're really excited for our students, Roger Williams, students that are choosing to stay local. We also have students that are going all over the country to wonderful places. So you heard tonight Clemson, university, students have been accepted at University of Michigan, Dartmouth, Richmond, UConn, Penn State, Arizona, Ohio State, so really all over the country. So we're really proud of our, proud of our seniors. They've had some wonderful opportunities ahead of them, and so we're looking forward to hear where everyone kind of makes their final decision on where they're going to head. Finally, and this is a very recent development since we last talked about the budget, the town council has proposed to the Narragansett Police Department to add a school resource officer to the elementary school. They are proposing sharing that cost with the, with the schools, with the Narragansett school system. You know, given the increased level of security necessary in our current environment and talking with Chief Corrigan, you know, certainly that would be a resource that, from an administrative perspective, we could use. And so, you know, that is something that will be coming up as the budget process continues to unfold. We'll bring it back to, to the school committee for further consideration. But I just wanted to make you aware that that was in the public sphere and being talked about at the town council level. So that's what I got.
So any questions or comments for Pete?
Just one, Peter. We have two, currently two school resource officers. Didn't one of them also split, was split with the council at one point?
We do. So our middle school, school resource officer currently is split with the town side.
All right. And I, and this, you might not have too much insight into this, but is the town council also probably considering increasing our budget to match if they ask us to take on this additional expenditure?
I don't know that, you know, but certainly I would imagine it would either be some internal adjustments on our part, right? Which, you know, again, we can talk with the committee about that. I don't anticipate they're going to give us more than we requested, but certainly I think it will be, if this is a part of what they approve, you know, I would imagine that they would support our budget.
I would imagine that. I think the council is also causing, aware enough to understand that like, if they ask us to take on extra staffing, that they need to compensate likewise, especially if they're already wearing, willing to share the cost. They understand the financial aspect, so thank you, Peter.
So I, I am in support of you continuing your conversation with the town on that, and then bring that back. Anyone else from the committee want to kind of like weigh in on, whether you want Pete to continue to move forward with discussions with the town and then bring it back to us?
Yeah, so just to be clear, I do, I do support you move forward with discussions with the town. Thank you.
I look forward to the report that you're going to be providing us in the future and hearing more about those conversations. Do you have any approximate timetable? Are they wanting to move forward with as fast this discussion, or when can we expect to see that brought to, brought to us?
So it's a part of the budget process, right? And so, you know, that stretches between now and really early June, and so that'll be developing between now and then.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments for Pete with the superintendent's report? All right, thank you. So we're moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve consent agenda item CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So on to the budget report, and Dr. Cummings is going to give the budget report.
Great, I will try to do it justice, you know, big shoes to fill. And so, so far, our expenditures and encumbrances for the nine months ending March 31st, 2023, Our total budget is $34,659,329. So the percent unexpended and unencumbered is 12.24%, and the percent expended and encumbered is 87.76%. So we will try to squirrel away a portion of that 12.24% to help fund future endeavors.
Thank you, Pete. Anyone have any questions about the budget report? Okay, thank you. All right, so we're moving on to school committee business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent and the director of finance and administration, to award the contract for gym floor refinishing to O'Keefe Building Maintenance Incorporated in the amount of $61,290 for five years?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hi, Steve.
Good evening, how are you? This is just general annual maintenance. We go out to bid about every, usually every three years. This is a five-year contract because of the way the economy is with trying to lock in long-term prices. So this is over five years. Just screening of the gym floors, touch up the paint, make them look fantastic every year.
And this is at the gymnasiums at all three schools?
All three schools, yes.
I just want to say I appreciate the long-term thinking, especially in this current trend of high inflation and everything, trying to lock in some savings for us hopefully in the future. So thank you.
Thanks.
And those prices are locked in from '24 to '27?
Yes.
There's no wiggle room there?
No.
Okay.
And it's a contractor that we've used here at Narragansett, and I've used them for 30 years elsewhere, so.
Oh, okay. Anyone have any questions for Steve? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. We are on to business item number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the school committee meeting schedule for the '23-'24 school year?
So moved.
Second. So if folks take a look at the meeting schedule in our packet, one of the things that is highlighted in red is a date for a school committee workshop in July instead of a formal business meeting. And so you'll notice that the date is a little sooner than the third week. Alex and I both happen to be away, not together, on our own separate vacations the third week of July, so neither one of us is available, which is why you're not seeing like a date of like July 19th. So I wanted to ask the committee their availability for July 12th workshop, and also we can flex with the start time, like for people that are working in the summer, if five's too early, is there a different time that's better? So it would be great if people could give some feedback now. If not, we can circle back for that July date. But what are, what are people thinking about July 12th? Is that a date that you think will work, will definitely not work?
It's a Wednesday, right? 12th?
I believe so.
Yes.
Well, it's fine with me.
Yeah, usually I keep Wednesday, yeah, I should be fine.
Yeah, it's the second, it's the second Wednesday, so the 4th of July is on a Tuesday. July 5th is the Wednesday. It's the second Wednesday. I just definitely cannot do the third Wednesday, which is the 19th, and Alex can't do that either.
Yeah, no, that would, that works for me. Or 99% sure.
Yeah. Diane?
That's fine.
Okay. Jen, do you think, would Wednesday, July 12th, work for you for an evening school committee workshop?
Yeah, I don't see any conflict.
All right, and then how about a start time? I'm looking down there for Justin and Alex. Is five too early?
Five's fine for me.
5:30 would be a little bit better, just because I work in Wood Sockit, and I don't want to break any laws on the way down.
You might hit some beach traffic too, everyone coming to the beach at night.
That's true, it's nice.
Six o'clock maybe would be better.
Six o'clock, even. Six o'clock, I definitely have no problem. 5:30 would be.
Yeah, well, we don't want to.
I appreciate the rest of the school committee's flexibility on this.
No problem.
Thank you.
So a 6 o'clock start time on July 12th, and it'll be a workshop format. So we will be upstairs and not televised, and hopefully have some food. And then Alex and I will set the agenda for that workshop with Pete. Okay, other than that, yeah, I think if you look at the rest of the dates, it's really trying to hit that regular third Wednesday, and there's always a few exceptions because we don't like to have our meetings during the school vacation week. So you can see, we're following our pattern of like the February meeting, Valentine's Day. Instead of the third week, we've got that the second week, you know, placeholders for the budget workshops. Other than that, everything is pretty typical, including even like the August one is our, that's actually the, that's the fourth Wednesday, just with the way that August falls. So Pete, you obviously have looked at that. You think that the, the 23rd is a good placeholder for August because it's a little closer to school in case you have a last-minute hire and anything unexpected?
Correct, it's a little bit more advantageous to have that a little bit later just because of last-minute approvals that might be necessary to open school.
Okay, so other than that, it looks like the third Wednesday, again, there's a few exceptions that are purposeful. So you can see the August one, like Pete just said, is the fourth Wednesday. So anybody have any questions or comments or concerns about the proposed school committee meeting schedule?
And it looks like our first budget workshop is on February 28th, as opposed to being in March due to the way the calendar falls this year, so interesting. Just an observation.
Yeah, we got like four, five meetings in March, basically.
All right, any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. On to business item number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent and the director of finance and administration, to approve the purchase of video equipment for the digital media production sign-out lab from B&amp;H Photo Video in the total amount of $24,077.99?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is the last time I will come to for this digital media production lab. I met with, as I said, I'd met with Brian throughout the whole process, and we kind of prioritized furniture first, then desktops, then laptops, and he was going to be very flexible with his camera equipment. So after those other items were purchased, he had a remaining budget of around $25,000, and he went out and specked out all of the cameras, memory cards, external hardware, everything he needed. And he often buys from B&amp;H, and they are the leader in video equipment, and they have a national contract as well. So he kind of gave me everything. So he kind of gave me everything, I quoted it out, we got the formal quote. It came in exactly where we need it to be. So after this purchase, actually, we will have $103.19 left in that grant amount and we will find something to use that last money on. But this is the final purchase and everything else has already been received as, you know, a stipulation of the grant, as everything needed to be ordered prior to July 1st. So we're well ahead of schedule. If this gets ordered, it should show up in three weeks and we'll be complete, ready to go in the summer to set the room up.
That's great, and I love that there was a vision in place for this CTE program and then the grant, the 21st Century Technology and Furniture Grant, it's like the stars aligned.
Yeah, it was perfect timing.
Very cool.
Perfect.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a couple. So with B&amp;H, do they offer assistance in any kind of repairs?
Most of the stuff that you purchase comes with warranties, one or two-year manufacturer warranties. They don't specifically deal with repairs, they just deal with the manufacturer warranty on that.
Is this brand new or is this refurbished?
Everything is brand, everything is brand new. And Brian is very good with the video equipment as far as repairs and our tech department can also assist. But we also have a locking cabinet for all of this equipment, so it will be locked up daily. It won't be misused by the students, Brian will supervise that. So we don't expect a lot of break, breakage with it unless it's something normal with a manufacturer defect.
I just wanted to make another comment. In the district that I work in right now, we do, we have a TV studio in our middle school. And the responsibility that it teaches the kids on what the equipment is and how to treat it and how, you know, they get to walk around with badges and they get these special things. It really, you know, it's such a small facet of the program, but it speaks volumes. And I am so excited to see the lab and to maybe come in and see the kids at some point because this is a really, it's thinking forward and kind of meshing technology where it needs to be with education. So thank you for all the hard work and thank you to Brian too, I know he's not here, but.
I didn't want to make him come to this, I told him I would handle it. We've already met five or six times about it. Yeah, so we're ready to go. I know, we've talked to Steve as well, Steve has a plan for, as soon as the school year is over, getting that room emptied out. He has certain wall colors, we're going to make one wall a green screen wall painted green. So as soon as he can get the room painted, then we're ready to put all the equipment in and ready for the first day of school.
I just want to again applaud you for taking the initiative to apply for this grant and for bringing all of these items to us for the approval. I really look forward to seeing the lab once it's complete and am really happy that this opportunity is coming for the students. So I really appreciate it and again, thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you. On to item number six, is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration for the purchasing of Google Chrome OS management licenses from GovConnection in the amount of $20,595.80?
So moved.
Second, discussion.
So these are the licenses that I've mentioned before. At our district tech committee, we approved the transition of student devices from Windows to Chromebooks. So this will be for the three years, like next year, grades six, seven, and eight, and grades 10, 11, 12 will have those Windows laptops that we're converting over. So this is an upfront cost and it's actually not something that I've had to budget over because we were able to purchase Chromebooks this year, which were a savings of about $25,000. Those will be transitioned, that, those funds will be transitioned to these Google licenses and they're perpetual licenses, so they'll stay with those devices. And off the bat, if we stayed with the Windows device, we would have had to gotten antivirus with MDR protection, which would have probably been at least $60 per device. So we're already saving by paying a one-time fee of $30. Some of these laptops are still going to be, laptops converted to Chromebooks will still be used for another three years. So it's just a one-time cost. And we don't have to purchase these license with any new Chromebooks we buy because when you buy a new Chromebook, these licenses are included in them.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to item number five. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent to approve an attorney-conducted review of the Narragansett School District's current policy book not to exceed a cost of $12,500?
So moved.
Discussion? Pete?
So about every few years, I think it is good practice to work with the school attorney to do a review of our policy book. There have been a flurry of educational laws over the last four to five years. And I think it would be beneficial to the committee to use our attorney to go through our policies just to make sure we are in compliance with all of the past and present education regulations and laws that have been passed in the last number of years. And so that will give us a blueprint as we continue to update our policies. What we don't want to do is get into a, a practice where we are just being so reactive in only updating our policies in response to an issue or a crisis. And we want to be sure we're being proactive and catching up, quite honestly, with, with a number of the laws. So for example, there was a significant education reform package passed right before COVID hit. There were lots of legs with that while we were putting them into place and complying with all the regulations that we need to. That, not every nuance of those laws has yet been codified in our policies. And so we need some attorney and some legal help to make sure we're doing that in the right way. There's also been a number of federal cases that would affect our ADA and other policies in relation to special education 504 that we really could use a review with as well. So I would recommend to you that we use Barton Gilman, who is our attorney, for, you know, contract in talking with, with Steve Adams, our, our attorney. He estimates it would be, you know, between 40 and 50 hours to do that, which at the rate that they give us, we do get a discounted rate, would be at a maximum of $12,500.
Pete, what do you think the timeline would be when their work would be completed? Would, like, would it be completed by our July workshop or would it take longer than that?
That would be the hope. So he would try to start it this spring and hopefully get it, you know, in place so that we have a good kind of blueprint for going into the, the coming school year. And so we can do some policy revision as we go forward as soon as that review is completed.
And then after that review is completed, perhaps Diane and I with the policy committee can kind of look at the, the big picture, like, I'm making this up completely. Maybe he's going to say, you have 38 policies that need revision, here's the big four you should do immediately or whatever. And then Diane and I would kind of like make a timeline about, okay, these are high, high priority policy revisions. We're going to get these done by October and then we are going to kind of put things into buckets and then do this phase, that, like, like, kind of make a plan and then share the plan with the school committee. And then in the policy subcommittee, we'll look at each one and then it'll come back for a first read, second read revision, like all that.
Correct, so that would be the plan. And again, we're not in a crisis mode. I mean, we are, he did a quick review of our policy book and he said, you know, we are in decent shape. And so it's not a, it's not a crisis by any means, but we just want to be sure that we are as proactive as we can be and up to date as we can be to make sure that our policies aren't conflicting with any state level or national laws or regulations.
So will he also make recommendations on policies to include that we may be missing?
Correct, and so that, that's a great example, right? So there, I think a great example of where we are, you know, very much up to date would be around, you know, our 504 and special education, right? So Melissa has looked on that, we updated that recently, you know, we had a lot of, look at that. But every year, those laws change a little bit, right? And there are going to be, kind of knowing what's happening in the legislature, there could be more adjustments this year, right? So we want to make sure that we're up to date there. But there are other policies that haven't been changed since the 70s, right? And so we really have to look at those policies and say, are they still meeting the BEP? Are they still meeting the, the legislature rules and are they in compliance with federal rules as well?
Well, I really look forward to hearing the report or seeing the report that they present to us. And I'm certainly in favor of this agenda item. It will, you know, really allow us to be more updated and transparent into the, like a more transparent lens into the state policies and the guidance. And we certainly want to be compliant and I really appreciate the proactive approach that Narragansett is taking here. Thank you.
Just a real quick question. So I guess on the process that Tammy was talking about, so they will be providing a report to us that we'll all be able to see and then the policy subcommittee will go ahead and kind of deem an agenda schedule?
Correct, so what I am imagining, what Steve and I discussed is he'll almost triage it, right? So here are the policies that are due right now, right? Here are some policies that, you know, we should adjust but are not, you know, the highest priority. And there are some other policies that are, you want to take a look at this because they haven't been updated in a long time.
Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Just on the cost of the $12,500, is that calculated based on the max recommended 50 hours or forecasted?
Correct, so hopefully it will be less, and that's why we did not to exceed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And then the last item is not a voting item, it is a discussion item, discussion of late bus. And Jen had asked us to put that on the agenda. So Jen, I'll turn it over to you. Any questions or comments or anything?
Yes, so, you know, being the only parent of current Narragansett students right now, I do get to hear, you know, some wonderful things that are happening in the school district and then some things that maybe we haven't yet recovered from COVID or before COVID. This have, this specific discussion item has been brought to my attention a few times in understanding that some things have changed with the buses, I guess in the history over pre-COVID, pre-COVID days. I have little ones in the elementary school, so Pete, you might have to help me along with this. But as I understand it, we did have, or the high school and middle school did have access to a late bus where the high school went down to the middle school pre-COVID in order to access transportation home after detention or after-school activities.
Yes, so what would happen is that there, my recollection, right, is that we also had different start times at that and end times. So at that point, the high school ended at 1:50, the middle school ended at 2:30. And there were late buses that were available to students kind of about an hour after each ending time because the elementary school at that point didn't end until about 3:30. So there was a pretty big gap in there where we could provide drivers in that, in that time.
You know, seeing many things changed during COVID, I know there are a lot of parents that were able to transport their children to school and transport them home from school. And obviously, there weren't as many after-school activities during COVID. I think that has definitely changed now. You know, one thing that I am concerned about is the equity of the children being able to have access to transportation for after-school and before-school activities. Especially things having to do with extra help within their academics, also enrichment. Discussion of possible sports, but I know that's probably a tough topic to talk about because sports kind of goes into a different category. As we saw during the budget, we saw that, you know, obviously Narragansett does a great job that we have our own bus system and we save lots of costs that way. So, you know, I know we're not comparing apples to apples here. The one thing though, I think that we can discuss in solution is possibly outsourcing something for late buses. So that we don't have to take on the burden itself to staff one of our buses for that. So I didn't know if that was something that, you know, we could start the discussion on so that the children could start to have more equitable access for these programs and for also, you know, detention and other things along the sort that the school. Actually, let me just ask real quick about detention. Are most of the detentions served in school right now? I mean, if the kids don't have access to a bus or?
So they give them a lot of flexibility with detentions. And so this was actually something that really surprised me when I got here. So students are able to arrange detention when they have access to transportation. So no one is told, for example, you have to be here on Wednesday. It's, you have a detention and it needs to be served between, you know, September 1 and Thanksgiving. And so they arrange when they do their, they arrange their detention to when they have available transportation.
It just as an educator to me, it just, you know, the purpose of detention and whatever, you might have to serve it for, that, that to me just kind of sounds like it might not be serving its full purpose if we're not in a timely manner going ahead and giving equitable access for that or helping the kids with transportation. But moving forward, I mean, I think that possibly, especially if we do have money in the budget, we should probably tag some of it in order to maybe make a, I mean, make a bid to another bus company or staffing agency in order to get a late bus running as soon as possible. Is that possible?
Happy to look into it.
Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I'll just say that I may not be a parent in the Narragansett school system, but I was born and raised, grew up in the Narragansett school system. And I know equitable access to transportation is something that the Narragansett schools has always provided up until that the resources, the supply of drivers just was not there, you know. I know, you know, I've brought it up in a budget workshop, this idea of adding a late bus. And Pete, I think you explained it really well during that budget workshop that it's something that we've been trying to bring back, but the resources of being able to provide drivers and monitors has just not been there. We've had people, you know, you have one person call out sick and it's really difficult to fill that position. You have people working overtime, double shifts, just to get people to school. And I think we're really thankful to have that resource at all, to be able to provide students transportation to and from home. I know that there's been an ongoing issue in the state with other districts being able to provide bus transportation, some just not even able to be able to provide that at all. One of the things of being able to provide, being in a smaller school district, is being able to afford having bus routes. And I know every year, we're presented with those bus routes and there's a lot of time, thought, and energy put into putting those bus routes together. So, you know, I know, and I'm pretty confident that everyone up here is all in favor of equitable access to bus transportation as long as the resources are there to be able to provide it. So again, you know, just echoing the conversations that we've had in the past and appreciate Jen for bringing this agenda item up for discussion.
Sure, and we are certainly open to thinking out of the box and trying to do everything that we can. You know, one of the ongoing challenges in the current environment is A, having the drivers, right? B, having them available at the time when we need them. And so we have drivers. And so we have drivers, it's just that they can't, you know, they're doing home-to-school runs or sports runs typically at that same exact time and it's mostly the home-to-school runs that are the issue. Unfortunately, and we will certainly, you know, ask around and, you know, inquire to see if we can get some outside help with that. Most districts are in the same boat and so, you know, there are lots of, unfortunately, you know, there are lots of districts where they're not able to have activities proceed forward, sports teams, that type of thing because they can't get transportation for them. Everyone's kind of looking for the same thing and this... But, you know, again, we will continue to be creative and try to do what we can and, you know, we've thought about vans and, you know, we're going to see if that could work and we're going to think of all different ways and, not that we haven't been, but we'll continue to be open to feedback and, you know, if someone has a great idea that will help us solve this conundrum, we're certainly open to it.
I also do want to echo the strong appreciation that I have for the Narragansett School District being able to still provide sports programs and after-school programs. Some people, other districts, I know, were just cutting those programs altogether because they couldn't provide transportation after school. So again, this is, you know, something we certainly can look into. But again, really appreciate the Narragansett School District still being able to provide those programs for our students.
I do think one thing, when we talk about equitable as well though, and when you look at sports and you look at, you know, academic help and being able to access that after school, maybe there just needs to be a finer balance in that. You know, as a parent of two kids that are in sports, it's usually my husband and I who are able to make it to those games. So in some sense, sometimes, you know, the sports parents are actually able to transport their children on a sports team where possibly that resource for a sports bus could be saved for the kiddos whose parents, you know, work across the state and can't get back here in time to transport them home after another activity at school or for extra help. So I don't know if there's a way to balance that out or, like I said earlier, maybe look to outsource to a different bus company. I appreciate the discussion.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Yes, just, didn't we try a, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to recall back when we discussed this during the workshop, is that we are able to run a late bus, but it's really late, it's...
Correct, so in, we could run a bus at 4:30, you know, unfortunately, activities conclude at 3:30 and so that hour of dead time is unfortunately really complicated, right? Because you have to have supervision for kids, you have to have a place for them to go. We're still open to it, but the feedback that we, the soft feedback that we've gotten from families is they don't really want to wait till 4:30, they don't want their children hanging around for an extra hour when they don't need to be.
That is something I'm actually interested in pursuing, I know we've gotten some feedback on that, but if it's about equity, having, having the availability, even if it is a little delayed, well, little delayed, an hour in my opinion is quite a delay, but we are working in a drastic shortage that has affected vendors, other districts, and RIDE along with pretty much the private sector as well. Pure Pan and those companies have all been really pounding pavement trying to get what seems to be an ever-decreasing pool of applicants. So, but that's something I think we should highly consider. You know, because if we're talking, if we're talking equity, availability, even if it's at the cost of some, you know, our, something like that, is better than not having the activity or to cancel sports events and availability for that, so.
Well, the supervision piece is super important.
Yeah.
So if a teacher's going to volunteer from 2:30 to 3:30 to run a club or activity, to then ask that teacher, can you just stay an extra hour just to kind of watch the kids till the bus comes? Like, that's not, that's not fair to ask a teacher or principal to watch kids for an extra hour waiting for the bus and the kids are up at, you know, 6:30 in the morning, they're getting to school at 8.
Yeah.
A late bus that comes at 4:30 is going to put them home after 5, especially if they live in the North End, so.
5:00, 5:30, yeah.
Right, but that, the activity ends at 3:30, who's going to watch the kids 3:30 to 4:30?
Well, in my opinion, I would hope that, well, from what we've heard and what we know is that this is not a, we don't have hordes of kids waiting after school for this late bus. So I'm hoping this would just be an occasional thing.
Right, but if it's one kid, who's going to watch the kid? That's the, that's a problem.
We'll, you know, I appreciate the suggestions, we will continue to look at it. It's, you know, I will just say, it's not that we have not been looking at it, right? And so certainly we are open to different thinking and, you know, we will examine it again to see if there's a different way that we can think about it.
I just had one more comment, just as you were talking, Justin, it spurred something in my head. So I think this would be a really good opportunity to, you know, talk with the PTO organizations. I know for the elementary school, and again, my kiddos are in elementary, you know, they rely on PTO in order for somebody to be there for the kids when they do their enrichment programs. So maybe, you know, there could be some kind of shared responsibility among parents if, you know, a survey could go out, really, honestly, I mean, that would probably be the easiest way. And then the other thing too is, I mean, if we're in a healthy budget season now, you know, looking at maybe staffing, I mean, I know, you know, especially in my district, you know, we have intermurals and stuff like that come along for opportunities. Sometimes there are teachers or aides that look for, you know, another opportunity after school in order to increase their income. So to me, that wouldn't be a horrible cost, you know, one hour, couple of days a week, so.
It's like offering after-school daycare, which is what, you know, we're not a daycare place, but can certainly look into it.
Absolutely, so again, you know, we know it's a, my phone's not... You know, certainly we know it's a need for some families and, you know, we'll continue to explore it and see what our options are.
Yeah, and we've been talking about particularly lack of bus staffing for, feels like years at this point because COVID exasperated it, but we, you know, it's been a general sector trend in transportation for the last couple of years, so. We're doing better than most districts, probably all districts. We haven't kind of called in the National Guard yet, which I think is a positive. You know, and if we, you know, are doing the best we can, so.
Great, thank you. Any communications anyone wants to mention? All right, so our next meeting here is May 17th at 7 o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:05?
So moved.